Well, thank you all for being here tonight. A beautiful sunny day, September 11th. For those of you that attended the ceremony at the Fire Hall this morning, thank you for coming out for that. Also, a flag raising for big brothers and big sisters this morning also. Here we are, the 31st meeting of the 143rd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. And I will ask, are there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, we'll go on to minutes.
I have motioned that the minutes of the meeting held on September the 5th, 2023 be confirmed. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? Carrie? First item.
Uh, first, actually, we don't have a deputation, but we do have a presentation. So council will resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. Uh, first committee is strategic direction and development. First item is a strategic plan presentation. Uh, Liz Gray and Ann Becker from Clime Consulting will prepare and or will provide an overview on the development of the city's new strategic plan. Um, and I think with that, we do have Ms. Gray online, your worship. Uh, if maybe we can enable her to make her presentation.
Well, let's, let's pull her up and we're all set. Okay. And I'll remind members of council, we will, we will be meeting again tomorrow night for a couple of hours on strategic plan. So tonight is information for us and for the public, but most of your questions certainly can be tomorrow evening. Do I have, we, so we have, there we go, we're doing it now. Good evening. How are you?
Evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. Um, Ann Becker is here with me also. She's experiencing some technical difficulties that she's working through at this time. Um, so Ann has the lion's share of the presentation for tonight. I am happy to start by talking about engagement. Oh, there's Ann. Um, can everybody see Ann?
We can all see Ann and you.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about that. I was, uh, I was having a lot of, it was just spinning, so I couldn't get in. So I appreciate your patience. Um, why don't I just share my screen? And I'll pull up the PowerPoint.
There you go.
There we go. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Yes, good. Um, so thank you, everyone. We're really excited, Liz and I, to be here with you this evening. Um, it's a great opportunity to kind of, as, as you said, um, previously, I could hear you, but I couldn't see anything and I couldn't see myself showing up. But I did hear you saying that we have our session tomorrow night, which is going to be awesome. That's more of a focus group and tonight is very much to share kind of the context and the journey that we're going on over the next four months, um, to build the city's strategic plan. So we just wanted to walk you through our methodology. Please jump in if you have any questions or comments or concerns. It's, we really want it to be a collaborative session. Um, so any questions about that before we kind of start and jump right in or? No?
You know.
Okay, so I'll just keep going. So, um, I'm going to do most of the presentation and then Liz is going to spend some time on the engagement processes, which are really taking shape now, but I'll kind of, um, you know, start with the front side and, and the, and the session. And Liz is going to fill in the section, um, related to our engagement processes, which are super important. Okay, so before we started, we thought we'd just open it up to council and just ask you from your perspectives, we'd love to hear what you feel are the greatest benefits associated with refreshing the city of St. Thomas's strategic plan. So just to get a sense of what you're hoping for, um, to come out of this process, um, over the next few months. Any comments on that?
Wow, I have a shy council tonight. Counselor Peters?
Um, thanks, your worship. Um, I'll jump in. In, in my opinion, so much has changed even since this process has begun with the, with the VW announcement. Because that is totally going to transform the community in so many different ways. Um, it's already started and we know it's going to continue to. Um, and a couple of things that I would just want to raise as we go forward, on particularly on the community engagement portion of it, because I think that that's crucial. I, um, I keep sharing the city's post to remind people that this process is going on and we need to make sure that the buy-in is there. And, and I would just encourage us to be as a community, as a, as you are, as you as our leaders, um, you know, endeavoring to reach out to every possible group and organization that's out there. But two that I think are crucial as we develop our strategic plan going forward, again, because of what I see of how the face is going to change the community, actually three points. Um, one is, um, is the changing face of St. Thomas? And how do we engage with various cultural communities that are now choosing to make St. Thomas its home? And we're, we're seeing that more and more every day. And it's going to be crucial to, uh, make sure that they feel welcome and that they're, they're part of a process. Because these families that have settled here are probably going to bring their loved ones into the community, et cetera. So I think that, that cultural face of St. Thomas. The other two areas that I would like to hope that you can find a way to draw into this and engage. And again, it's what the community is going to look like, is from the healthcare perspective. To make sure that we have, we're going to have the resources that are available, uh, for a growing community, whether that's our hospital facilities, we've already heard a bit from them on a previous presentation. Uh, but healthcare, whether it's a hospital, doctors, mental health, those are all things that we're going to need um, and need to be part of as we're planning our future. And the other component in that, that I would like to hope that you can reach out to in moving forward, is from an education perspective. You know, we've already got too many children spending their time in a classroom that's affordable. And if we're going to grow as a community, how do we engage our school boards to be part of that process? That long-term planning process, because we're going to need places for people to learn. So to me, the most critical thing going forward right now is the, is community engagement. Thanks, your worship.
Other members? Counselor Baldwin says?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to having a recharge, a renewal, and a very vigorous look at what and how far we've come and how much more we need to do. And looking forward to the conversation tomorrow night. Thank you.
Counselor Wookiee and then Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, worship. I'll, I'll say it, try, try not to boast on our behalf as a city, but, um, we got a lot of stuff done that was already on the strategic plan. So I mean, when you get to a certain point, you're saying, well, things have gone pretty well, then let's, let's forge ahead and look at new priorities. So part of the reason we're doing a refresh is because things have gone well and we've gotten things done. And, and these folks are going to help us chart the, the rest of the course. And that's what I'm, I'm very excited about this. Thank you.
Counselor Gibson?
Thank you, worship. I would just like to say thank you for having this opportunity for myself, being a first-term council member. It makes me engaged in with the public a little more to see and hear what they have to say in regards to what we need or want for our community. So, um, I, I appreciate this. I would just like to thank them for, uh, coming up with this great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I too, I, I'm pretty excited about what's going to happen in the next three and a half or four years. Uh, we've got new capital projects that we need to look at. Uh, we got public transit we've talked about to get it going. Our, our, our key things are public health, um, our health with, uh, our new MRI coming in and, and things like that. And, uh, we need to be able to recruit more physicians to our city, uh, as our city grows, looking for, for things like that. And, uh, I guess I'm just looking forward to the challenge of, of continuing what the good work we've done the last four years. So anyway, thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. Uh, my question was, my idea was more of a question in terms of the process and that is, will you be, uh, since we have a strategic plan in place now, will you be reviewing that with administration as a bit of a report card as a starting point so that we know, um, as a refresh, what we've accomplished as Counselor Wookiee has mentioned and, and what we still need to, to finish off? Or maybe as, because of times have changed that we want to just drop something? And, uh, and then obviously it's the, the new work that we want to do. I'm just wondering if, if the beginning point will be a review of the present strategic plan?
Uh, yes, so that, that's an excellent question. And yes, as part of our environmental scanning process, which is very much looking in and looking out, one of the key things we'll be looking at progress against the strategic plan, um, goals and objectives and what, you know, what is complete, where are there some gaps, where are there some opportunities? And then where can we build on strengths and successes going forward? So that's definitely part of the process. Yes.
Great. Further questions, comments? If I could add one from the chair, um, the greatest benefits associated with refreshing the St. Thomas strategic plan is that we keep the same importance there. I, Counselor Wookiee, I think I've quoted you about a hundred times in our last strategic plan process. You said, "I've seen too many dusty plans on a shelf." And it's only good if we go back and look at it every once in a while and make sure we're moving forward. Well, I think we can safely say we got a lot done out of the last plan, but you're right. It's time to refresh it and time to, to, for this council to say, "What does the future look like?" And so that's the greatest benefit I'm looking for. Thanks.
Excellent. All really great comments and contributions. Thank you so much. We appreciate that and we've jotted them down. Um, so we'll make sure we achieve all of those goals. And we're, I think a lot of the people that you talked about in terms of reaching out to various groups in the community are on our list, um, to have, um, collaborative discussions with. So, um, we look forward to hearing from them as well. So. Okay, so, um, I'll maybe just dive into our presentation and again, please, um, jump in if you have any questions. Um, but we just wanted to kind of give you an overview of our methodology. We recognize that this is a refresh and it's, you know, very much building on your strengths, building on your assets, your successes to date, but also the world is constantly changing. St. Thomas is changing. You've got lots of exciting things happening in the city. It's like, what, how do we leverage our strengths? How do we overcome any limitations or weaknesses to move forward boldly and do, you know, and really, um, capture what's possible in the next three to four years? Um, so this methodology will kind of walk us through that. And we wanted to kind of start with what, what is strategic planning or our process all about? And what does it answer? And, and one of the things that we really want to look at as part of this new process is that vision for the city of St. Thomas. And it's really perfect timing to do that. A relatively new council, you have huge opportunities before you. So what is the vision for the city of St. Thomas? So why do, why does St. Thomas exist? And, and really from that, the big question is, and this is an important piece of our methodology, is how do we create value for the communities we serve? We exist to create value. What's the impact that we can have on the many communities you serve across St. Thomas? Whether they're residents, they're youth, they're families, they're business owners, um, whoever they may be. Um, we want to understand that better and really, um, identify those. Um, the next piece is what do we need to focus on from a strategic level in order to achieve that vision and create that value? So this is like, in order to get to that level, what do we have to do? And, and you've already, you know, you have your themes from your first strategic plan. And so what of those, you know, um, do we sustain? And what are the, some of the newer areas that we'll need to focus on as well? And then the piece of the puzzle, um, that we talk about is, um, that's often missing, is what capacity and resources do we need to enable these strategic priorities? It's all well and good to have great ideas and great goals, but again, we need the people. We need the resources. We need the infrastructure, the technology to drive success. Um, so that's another key answer that we hope to get out of this process. And then the last two are how will we measure progress and success? So almost you can imagine, um, a scorecard or, um, some kind of tool where you have performance indicators that are measured against your strategic plan and you're tracking how you're doing as you go along. And the last piece is, um, how will we implement the strategic plan? Your comment earlier about, we don't want this sitting on the, you know, the shelf. It's got to be a living, breathing document. We know all research shows that about 80% of strategic plans are not implemented. Um, so, you know, it's a critical piece is to have that, that, you know, those performance indicators as well as that implementation plan, which then is translated into or cascaded into action plans as well as, you know, how do we align it back to our, our budgeting process? Um, so that's, that's what our, our approach is in terms of getting answers to those key questions. Um, and then this is kind of the methodology we use and it, it really links quite nicely to those answers. Um, you know, we really get our answers through our engagement process. So, so there's two pieces of data that we're looking for. We're looking for the data that comes from our internal and our external scan, which is very much, you know, talking to our staff, understanding what our community partners need, understanding, um, you know, what trends and influences are happening in St. Thomas and the broader, um, region that impact us. So really getting a handle on that. Um, and then the other piece is very much that engagement, talking, listening to the voices of the communities you serve and understanding what do they need, expect, hope, um, what are their aspirations for the city of St. Thomas? We want to reflect that in the strategic plan. So, once we have all that data, which we will gather over the next two months, then we analyze all of that data and lots of good information starts to emerge that paints a picture um, in terms of how can we refresh, um, our current strategic plan? As someone said, recharge for the future. Um, so this, out of that, we would identify as a really good starting point is really having, um, an understanding of what the vision is, which is your why, your impact. Um, you cannot, we will hope to also develop a mission statement, which is again, why? You know, what is the work you do as a city? Um, and then the next piece, once we have the answers to those, we can say, okay, what are the outcomes we want to achieve for the communities we serve? And so, you know, what are the outcomes for residents or for business owners? Or, you know, new, um, for developers, for whoever it may be, we want to think about what are those outcomes we're trying to achieve? Once we know those, we drop down to our strategic priorities. And this is the question that in order, what strategic priorities should we focus on to create value for the communities we serve? And then, as I said earlier, next in our themes is organizational capacity. And this is very much what kind of, what, what human resources do we need? What kind of culture, technology and infrastructure? Because they all drive up. Without great human resources, without great culture and technology, you're not going to get a lot of traction at the top end, um, because really this is very much the heart of what drives that. And then the last piece of our methodology is about sustainability. And that is extremely critical in complex times when resources are tight, but you're also a growing community, you have big opportunities. So how do we invest and how do we use our resources as wisely and effectively and efficiently to advance our goals up here? Um, so this talks very much about resourcing, um, our strategic plan. It talks about the power of great partnerships, because you can't do this work alone. When you were talking about education or healthcare, again, we have to collaborate with the hospital system. We have to collaborate with, um, uh, you know, education, all of those other areas. So, you know, it takes, it takes all of us working together. Um, and it also, this last section also speaks to advocacy at different levels of government to support the work that you're doing and communication back out to your, your communities, especially your residents. What's happening, what's going on, ensuring they understand, um, the way forward. And then the last piece is really getting clear about what our guiding values are. And that's very foundational to the strategic plan, um, as you move forward. So that's what we hope to create for you, um, as, you know, as a group and working very closely with our steering committee, with council and with your senior leaders. Any questions about any of that? No? Okay, I'll just.
You're in a good job. Carrie.
Okay, I'll just keep plowing ahead. Okay, I'm not going to go on all of, through all of this because I know that we sent this out in advance, but we just wanted, we really think it's important, what are the guiding principles for a great strategic planning process? And, and so one of them and that we put in place is that we are having a strategic planning steering committee, um, which is under obviously the leadership of council and our city manager. And that, um, committee has already had one meeting and we're meeting again, I think it's Wednesday of this week for our second meeting and they are representative of different levels and, um, roles across, um, the city, which is really awesome. Um, another key one is we want our processes to be very integrated, inclusive, trust-based. It's, and key is listening to the voices of all of your communities and diverse voices. Not, we, you know, we want to hear from many different people. Um, transparency is very, very important. Um, and through, and we get, you know, we ensure that through dialogue, debate, communication. It's very respectful. You know, we want to hear diverse ideas and opinions um, and, and be open to, um, bold and, and creative, um, thoughts and perspectives. Um, obviously what a good strategic planning process is, is that it's bold and aspirational. We don't want to talk a lot about the past, you know, 10 years ago about old things. It's very much about the future and how do we deliver meaningful change, um, that will be positive. Um, and then of course, a key one is that whatever we do is going to result in a set of goals, um, that, you know, or can be supported by concrete actions and initiatives. Um, so those are some of the, um, key guiding principles for this strategic planning process. Um, and then I just wanted to say, this is, uh, these are the representatives that are on the steering committee. So it is quite a large steering committee, um, which is great. And it just shows the level of interest, um, from your staff in terms of wanting to be involved in this and seeing the importance of it. Um, so we're super excited to work with this group. Um, and Taylor, who's the strategic initiatives manager, she's the lead on like project planner, planning lead. And she's been great to work with, really helping us kind of organize all of the engagement activities that have been happening or that are going to happen over the coming, coming weeks. Um, so that's been great.
Counselor Herbert, Counselor Herbert had a question. I'll go again.
Thank you, worship. Uh, you have quite a list there for sure, but I, I was kind of surprised to see there's no representation from the police department. I mean, I, I would think they would be big time involved with a lot of the things that happened in the city. But anyway, I don't see them on there and there's obviously probably reasons why, but don't, uh, don't see, don't see them on there right now. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and so the, um, the, uh, chief of police and the deputy chief were both present at our meeting the other day, um, with the senior leadership team. And we are doing one-on-one interviews there and we will be insured to engage them actively in the process. So, okay. Okay, so, um, steering committee, just so you have a sense of what their role is, it's very much they, um, they're guiding our process. So as we go through our meetings, especially when we start to bring back data, um, from the scanning process and the engagement process, they'll weigh in on that, tell us if we're missing things or there are gaps. Um, they obviously bring expertise, ideas, thought leadership to the discussions. Um, if we're, if we're experiencing challenges or issues, um, you know, one may be people aren't showing up at the town halls or something like that. Can they give us advice on how do we get more people to come out? And that really links to the next point, which is they're very much champions for the strategic planning process. We want them encouraging people to come out and collaborate and get involved and participate, um, in the process and, uh, help us break down any barriers to success. And then of course, they'll provide feedback on draft iterations of the strategic plan and, and support the successful transition of the strategic plan into the implementation phase. So a very important role and, um, we're grateful for their involvement in the process moving forward. Okay, I'll just keep going. So just in terms of timeline, um, it is a very, uh, um, fast timeline or aggressive timeline, I would say we're doing a lot in a short period of time, but I think we've got all our, everything lined up quite well. Um, so for the last couple of months, we've been spending a lot of time on the planning and prep work for the strategic planning process and it's surprising how much work that actually is. Um, because you have to have invitations prepared, you have to figure out who you're going to talk to, you have to prepare your questions and your formatting for how you're going to do engagement, um, develop your tools. So that's been happening over the last couple of months. Um, community engagement actually started in August, well, even before that, because the city before we were in, before Liz and I were involved, had already done a survey, a community survey of residents. So that was awesome. And, um, then we launched a staff survey, I believe in August. And we also did some pop-ups, um, not Liz and I, but staff from the city, um, did some pop-up engagement sessions at, um, festivals and activities that were occurring in the city. And I believe that may be happening in September as well. Um, so, but the bulk of the community engagement will happen, um, in the next two months. And Liz is going to show you a little bit more detail about that. Um, environmental scanning has already started as well. Um, data analysis will, it's ongoing. Like whenever we're finished something, like we just finished the survey, it ended on Friday. Um, we're already analyzing that data and we're actually going to show you a, a few highlights today. Um, the, and then we, so that happens between September and November. Um, simultaneously, you're starting to develop ideas that are forming the strategic plan, but that's going to be November, December. We want to have community feedback, obviously happening, um, in sync with that. And then the hope is we can wrap up the plan with council approval by the end of December with the launch in January 2024. So it's tight, um, but, uh, we think we can do it, um, using everyone, you know, all hands on deck. Okay, um, a couple more things before we jump into the engagement. We will be very cognizant of, um, communicating with our communities. So, you know, obviously internally, um, we have our staff communities. Um, we have senior leaders who will want to really engage and involve. I mean, obviously they're the ones very much on the ground that will be leading, um, the implementation of the plan. Um, and then of course, there's our external communities too. So the things that we typically want to be paying attention to is, you know, why are we doing this? Um, so I know one of the council members talked about that they're really talking to people, get involved, get, you know, engage in the consultation. Those are great messages. And why, why should you do this? Because it's your city and, and you can help shape the future of St. Thomas. And, and so what will be different? Well, it'll be different based on the voices and the, and the, um, needs that we identify. So hopefully it'll be different in a really positive way while protecting all the great things, right? Um, people often know, want to know what is the strategic planning process? But more importantly, how can I get involved? How can I lend my voice? And there's many different ways they can do that. Um, how will you keep me updated? So it will be important that we, you know, have updates, um, as we move along, perhaps on your website or through other, um, ways of communicating with your communities and what is the timeline? So putting it out there, we hope to have this wrapped up by the end of the year and ready to go in early 2024. Um, so that, that is basically when you think about communicating with our various communities, that, those are the questions they're asking and, and we need to be thoughtful about how we answer those questions, um, as well. Um, so, next one is community engagement. And I'll just, I'll just tell you a little bit of a background about this. When we, when we met with our steering committee, one of the things that we really wanted to understand is, you know, who should we meet with? Who should we hear with, hear from? And we use this great little tool and it talks about community interest on the vertical axis. And we use this great little tool and it talks about community interest on the vertical axis and community influence on the horizontal axis. And this is really looking at, there's so many people we could engage with, right? But there's some who have a lot of influence and a lot of interest and they land up here in the top white, top right quadrant. And these are people that we call really co-creators of your plan. There are people that really care deeply, are very interested and they have a lot of influence and, and even influence, will this plan be successful or not successful? And so clearly a group that would land here is staff. But generally your residents would land here as well. Often not all of your community partners, but many of them would. Obviously, police would land in this quadrant. So it's very much looking at who are these co-creators of our plan? They're also collaborative collaborators, consultants, you know, information providers. They can give us lots of food for thought, but they're people we really want to reach out to. And then the people down here are, they have a lot of influence, but they're maybe not as interested because they got so much of their own stuff on their plate, right? So if you thought about the hospitals, um, of course they're extremely interest, they're interested, but you know, not to the same degree as others may be. But they have a lot of influence on successful outcomes. So we really need to draw them into the conversation, into the dialogue. Um, and then on this side of the chart is ones up here, we want to keep them informed because they're interested, but they don't have as much influence. Um, so you know, certainly they're invited to attend, but they're not people we might do one-on-ones with. And down here, these are into, you know, communities that really aren't that interested and don't have much influence. So we don't, you know, spend as much time here. So this is how we developed our schedule of engagement and who was really critical to think about. And then these are some of the ways that we are engaging. So we're doing community conversations. We've, the city has already done a large-scale survey. We're doing a large-scale survey with staff. We'll do a little bit of social media. We'll likely do some think tanks where we dig into issues that have really come up to a bigger level where we maybe bring together a small group of experts or influencers in that area and asking for more detailed information. We asked for submissions from every department in the city and we, I believe we've received them all and they're excellent, very informative. As I said, we've already done the pop-ups in the community. So that's another way to hear from, you know, diverse groups that maybe wouldn't be as comfortable attending, you know, town halls or focus groups and we're doing some one-on-one interviews. And we're always doing visioning all the time. We're asking people about their aspirations. So those are the different ways we're engaging people throughout this process. Um, and so lastly, uh, this is kind of a high-level overview of the groups that we're meeting with. But maybe what I'll do is, um, just let Liz pull up the schedule really quickly. I think our time's pretty good, um, and show you kind of a high-level overview of the chart. So you have a really good sense because we think that's important for council to see that. So I'm going to stop sharing. So bear with us while we just do a quick turnaround here. And I will turn it over to Liz.
Great. And can you see the spreadsheet in front of you?
We can.
Okay, great. So what you're seeing in front of you is the engagement plan that I've, uh, put together in conjunction with Taylor Mooney has been helping me to get together the different communities that we are going to be speaking to. What you see here in the purple area at the top are, are three community town halls, the first of which will be Tuesday, September 19th. Two of our community town halls to speak to community members at large will take place in a face-to-face venue, one at the arena and one at the library, one in, you know, one at different times of the day too, one at noon and then, um, one in the evening. And then we have our one virtual session on the 21st of September occurring over Zoom. So you can see here over in column F that we are struggling a little bit to get registration. We'd like to see these numbers, uh, get a little bit higher. So Taylor and I are talking about ways that we can lift those numbers in the final days, uh, prior to, uh, the events taking place. Anne and I will be attending all three of those town halls together so that we can hopefully, if there are more folks, organize, um, registrants in different tables that are each manned by a different member of our steering committee so that we can ask detailed questions of those in attendance and have the steering committee, uh, member record answers in small groups. And then we'll do a share back to the larger group. So that's our vision, um, for the event, uh, if we can get registration higher. Coming down now into, um, the next colored area here, um, youth. Again, Taylor and I are still working on a plan. We have not had a lot of success yet engaging, um, young people in the city, but we know that it's an important voice that needs to be heard as a part of the plan. And so, uh, Taylor has a meeting with youth can this week to try to, to see how we can and get, get in front of a group of youth to ask some, some questions about the, um, about what they feel is important in the city going forward. Coming down into the yellow area here, you'll see our four community conversations. We have broken, um, them into three different groups. The first two are community and social services group conversations that will transpire over Zoom. We knew that that was a really large group of folks that was invited to participate. And you can see here over in registration, we already have 35 people that have signed up. So Anne and I will man those together over Zoom and, and take that 20, for example, if that's where it lands in the end and break it into two, uh, groups of 10 in breakout rooms so that we can ask questions and ensure that everybody's, uh, voice who is in attendance is heard as a part of that process. So two dedicated to community and, uh, social service groups. Then we come down to business conversations. So again, amazing registration from the business community in St. Thomas. We have 20 signed up for that one. Again, Anne and I will follow, um, the same format over Zoom for that one, breaking that 20 into two different breakout rooms so that we can ask, um, detailed questions. And then down here in housing development, we have a lower number. Taylor is working on improving that number for us, but that will transpire at the end of September. So those are our community conversations, all virtual to happen during business hours. And then coming, oh, sorry.
I have a question from Counselor Clark. We'll throw it in here.
Uh, thanks, worship. Uh, just an idea with regard to youth. Every high school student has a student council and, um, pulling those people together would be an idea. Also, most elementary schools now have some kind of student, uh, council as well. So you could pull, uh, some of those sevens and eights together. And just wondering, uh, before we keep going down the columns there, whether or not you're engaging service clubs or church groups or minor sports or minor, you know, um, some of those larger groups that use recreation or culture, uh, in the city.
Yes, absolutely. If I flip over to the tab here, we get some more detailed, um, information here on my worksheet. But this, this list was put together by Taylor. So in our community services, for example, we've got employment services, senior center, St. Thomas Elgin Pride, the police. And as we come down here, uh, there's a variety of sports associations that were invited to be a part of the, um, event and faith-based organizations to amazing question. So yes, that falls within the community and social services group. Great. And thank you noted on the ideas for, um, student council at the local high schools and elementary schools. I will definitely follow up on that. Thank you very much. Coming down to our, uh, council focus group, uh, as, as you know, will transpire tomorrow evening. So we will be in the city, uh, from five to seven tomorrow, working with council. And then we come down here to our staff and supervisor focus groups. We have two of those scheduled, one in September and one in, um, October to transpire again over Zoom where we will engage internal, um, staff and hoping to, I don't have registration numbers yet for that, but Taylor will forward those on to me soon. So we will be engaging with as many, um, staff and supervisors as possible. Our senior leaders focus group, as Anne mentioned, is complete. That transpired last Thursday in person, um, at, uh, police headquarters, and that was a very fruitful meeting. Coming down here into the pink area here, you will see and we, we can go through them. I have now scheduled 12 one-on-one interviews with various folks that have reached out who want to speak, uh, over Zoom for 30 minutes, um, privately. And so we have a few counselors that have signed up for individual sessions. Lori Baldwin Sands coming into the next, um, uh, row here. We have the president and CEO of the hospital along with, um, her board chair, Dan Ross. And we have the CEO of Southwest Public Health, um, and the medical officer of health, uh, for Southwest Public Health, meeting with me in October. We have chief of police. We have, uh, Sean Dyke from the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation, meeting one-on-one. And then I have three folks from the environmental and infrastructure services, uh, department at the city, meeting with me in late September. Again, we have the St. Thomas Downtown Development Board, um, Earl Taylor from that, uh, organization and representing the indigenous community, I'm meeting with, uh, Betty Buden. And, um, again, another counselor, uh, Steve Wookiee is meeting with me. I have a meeting with Amanda Stark and then Karen Vecchio has just signed up, um, in spot 11 there. And then we have a meeting with, uh, St. Thomas Immigration Partnership Organization too. So, um, looking for, none of those have happened yet. They're all to come and looking forward to some fruitful, uh, conversations with those 12 individuals and perhaps more to be scheduled in the next little while as those invitations continue to be sent out. Any questions about the, um, questions or suggestions about, uh, the engagement plan?
Counselor Wookiee. Thanks very much. All of us who ran for council, uh, were out on the streets last year at this time, uh, knocking on doors. And, um, I think about that minimal contact group that, that are not going to show up for any session, that are not going to get involved. And I, and this is just, I don't want to commit any of my colleagues to this, but like, uh, couple, couple pairs of counselors, uh, walking in some neighborhoods, knock on some doors and ask some questions. And that's the minimal contact group. And yeah, we might scare some people. But, um, I think we'll get some intel, but we would need your folks' help about what do we want to talk to them about? We can't just say, what do you think? Cause they might talk about who knows what. But if we can have some focus questions and then we go and knock on some doors, I bet you in one morning, the nine of us could, uh, gather a great deal of, and of course we would do it in different neighborhoods, different socioeconomic areas, different types of housing. And I think that with, uh, with us and you know, I'm sure we all like to exercise, so we could go for a little walk. But I'd like to suggest that as, uh, something for us to maybe talk about tomorrow night because it's the minimal contact people, like that minimal contact is probably 80% of the population. And I think we need to hear what they think and they're not going to find us. So I think we need to go find them. Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. We, I mean, that would be great. We're happy to give you questions. If you want to take that on, we'd love that. That's really great. Very innovative. So thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Joe. Uh, we also have two large events and I don't know whether or not something could be done where we have the, um, London Knights have a hockey game. We also have the NHL hockey game where the arena is going to be full of, uh, two or 3,000 people. And we also have the market every, every Saturday. So if there was a, a short questionnaire or something that could be done in, you know, check off five or six things, depending on what the format was, you could get a lot of data in, uh, a very short time.
Good thoughts.
Mm-hmm. Another good idea. That's great. Okay, so we'll talk to Taylor about those other ideas for sure. Okay, that is anything else, Liz, or is that it? Okay, I will pull mine back up. Everyone see that? Yes. Okay, so as I said, um, we closed the survey, the staff survey on Friday. So we just wanted to hot off the presses, we've analyzed some of the data. So we thought it's a good opportunity, especially as we go into the focus group tomorrow night, to just share some very high-level, um, information. So we did have 202 people respond to the survey, which is pretty amazing. It's about roughly like maybe a little less than 50%. So that's pretty great, I would say. Um, and lots of encouragement, you know, promoting staff to get involved and take the survey. So we appreciate all of that. Here, now I should mention though, um, we had 202 responses, but you'll notice in some questions about 10, 10 people sometimes choose not to respond to the question. So that you have to kind of take that with a grain of salt. But anyway, it is, it is what it is. But, um, we had very good representation across the board, which is again, really, really positive. So you can see here, um, that we've had a lot of good, you know, very diverse, it's not really lopsided. It's, it's representative of the size of groups. And, um, also by level within the organization, we had really good representation across all of the groups of leaders, managers and supervisors and staff. And we always give people the opportunity to, you know, if they don't want to answer, they don't have to. And, and about 14 people didn't want to say what, where they, what, you know, level they were at within the organization. But I think this is a, an excellent survey results, um, in terms of participation rate. So we're off to a really good start. We've seen much, much lower in many other organizations. So, um, the first question we asked, or I was close to the top, is we asked the question, looking out five years, what would you hope to be true for the residents and communities that the city of St. Thomas serves that is not true today? So this was very much an aspirational, um, question that we asked. And so here are the emerging themes that we heard, that people saw as important into the future. And, and you won't be surprised by any of these, I don't think. Affordable housing for all, um, obviously a really safe community with wellbeing, with strong wellbeing. And, and these were some of the things that they highlighted, um, here. A ro, a robust and developing economy, um, inclusive and diverse community. So people spoke very positively about that. Excellent community services that meet diverse needs and changing needs as you grow and you, as you bring in newcomers to the community, what we have to be cognizant of what people need and want. And, and so they talked, obviously recreation facilities, programming, all that kind of stuff is always something that's top of mind. But childcare options, supports for seniors. They talked, we heard about environmental stewardship and green initiatives. People want great infrastructure, of course, roads is always top of mind. This indoor pool idea, um, transit, fire, police, all of that. People recognize that as a growing community, a changing community, investment in these areas will be important. There was, uh, ideas about stigma and the sense that we don't want that to become a big issue in the community. So how do we care for our vulnerable populations, ensure people have understanding about different challenges that vulnerable populations are facing? Um, and you know, some of the ideas there were related to addictions, you know, mental health, homelessness. Culture and recu, cultural and recreational opportunities for residents of all ages and youth. People really want a community where youth can thrive and be at their best. And youth will stay in St. Thomas as they age and become young adults, will find work here and, and want to live and call this home. So really good ideas coming from your staff, um, in terms of, um, the vision for the city. Another question we asked was about values. So we, in this question, we gave a full, like probably, I don't know, there might've been 40 values. But as we know, organizational values guide behavior and how we relate to one another. So how do we make decisions? How do we serve our residents? How do we partner with communities with one another? How do we respond to challenges and opportunities? It really, you know, is very much li, linked to your culture. And, uh, so this is just the top, I think I chose, I, we just put up the top 13 or 15. But as you can see- Um but as you can see, overwhelmingly accountability is a value that we're accountable. To the residents and the communities we serve, so that rose to the top. Interestingly, and not really interestingly, but we don't often see this one at the top. Um, community, community was number two, transparency, um number three, learning and growth. People see that as a really important value, that as you grow, that we're prepared to learn and and adapt and innovate. Um teamwork, teamwork and collaboration was very high too. Um integrity, respect, um and you can go down the list. Um but it was great. This was a really good list that people came back with and I would say unique. Um we often see the same old kind of standard answers, but there was a lot more kind of thoughtful um values. That thoughtful ideas coming to the surface that aren't your usual um suspects. So, good. Now, of course, we would take this list and it's not like the top five will become the top five. A lot of them kind of you can, they blend together. And so it's very much about how do we define what these are? How, what do they look like? And of course, we need input from yourselves and and you know, other information will inform these as well. But that's, that's the starting point we're at. Um and then another question we said was reflecting on your experiences at the city of Saint Thomas. To what extent you do you agree with the following? And this was a weighted average out of five. Um and and so people, you know, are very positive about the impact. That their city is having on, you know, residents and on communities. So that you are improving lives, um that you're meeting the needs. Uh and that that is central to everything that you do, that you try very hard to involve and listen to what your residents and communities need. And expect, um that you're organized um effectively and efficiently to deliver great services. And um that you work collaboratively and proactively with your community partners. This was a very high score too. Um so this is, these are positive results. Again, how do we leverage your strengths? How do we build on this um for the future is um really important. Um, we also asked the question, um reflecting on the current city of Saint Thomas strategic plan. How do you feel the city is performing against the three strategic goals? This is a weighted average out of four. So you can see the one where people feel that you're doing, that the city is doing the best at. Is vibrant community, enhancing opportunities for connection and development to promote growth for people and businesses in the city. Um the next one is thriving community, um investing in the development of planned assets to advance access for people in the community. And the one that people, you know, feel is, it's still above, you know, a two, a level two. But how do we, you know, and I know there's a ton of work going on in this, supporting and engaging vulnerable people to enhance quality of life for all citizens. Um so this is insightful information as well, um as we move to refresh the strategic plan. And uh I think that's the last piece. And there's more questions, but that was, you know, we just haven't had a chance. It only closed on Friday. We haven't had a chance to analyze the whole survey. Um but we wanted to give you just a few little snippets, insights. What I would, what Liz and I would say is, um we feel a very positive vibe. Um working, if I can say it like that, working with the city of Saint Thomas, people seem very committed. And I would say pretty happy. Um one of the questions indicates that people are pretty happy working at the city. Of Saint Thomas and feel that they really have important work to do. So that was wonderful to see. So something as counsel that you can be very proud of um when you have that kind of environment. And so again, how do we sustain and build that moving forward? And and we'll share more um more of the survey results with you as we kind of move forward, because there's some good insights. And lots of, um initially, when people were responding to the survey, there wasn't a lot of qualitative um comments being made. Um but as we closed the survey, there are lots of quality comments. So we were able, you know, as we can dig into that, that's where you can find it kind of the nuggets of information that tell stories too. That what's behind the numbers, right? Um especially if there's something that's lower than you thought it might be. If you dig into those comments, you can kind of say, oh. That's the opportunity that we can work on or fix or whatever. So any questions on that survey? No? Okay. Um so the last slide we just wanted to show you, we talked before about our environmental scanning process. We use the SWOTA framework, which is um as I, as we've said a couple of times, um looking internally at our strengths. What can, what's, what are we doing well? What are the most valuable assets and resources that we can leverage? And um, you know, move forward from um the weaknesses, what must we improve? And every organization has things they can improve. What are those barriers to success, things that get in our way and that we're like, we got to improve that? Um, that's kind of the looking inwards. And then the looking outside is the opportunities. So what must we leverage for impact? Um what can we investigate? What can we act on? What are the big trends? Um we know, obviously, we have a a huge economic opportunity that we will um advance. Um and move it forward, but there's lots of other things in your community um that we, that you will want to address. Um and then what are the threats? What could harm our community? What could get in the way or um of us achieving our vision? Um what threats force you to think and act differently, um to really question, hmm, is that the right way to do it anymore? Um and then the last part of the SWOTA environmental scan format is the aspirational piece. Um and this is asking, as we did your staff, what, what do you care deeply about? What do you hope for? Um what, what are our communities passionate about? Why do they choose to move, live, stay in Saint Thomas? And so we want to understand that better, because that really influences your vision, obviously, but also the outcome statements. And um the goals. So that's the, that's the other big piece of our data um development. And that's it. That's what we wanted to share with you. Um we're right on time. We have three minutes. I don't know if there's any questions. Or um comments that you would like um to share with us?
Well, we get some more of your time tomorrow night too. So we certainly can think of our questions overnight and. And uh come up with all of them tomorrow as we start the planning process from the council level too. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to present and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow at five o'clock in person. We'll be there in person.
Okay, great. Perfect. We'll see you then.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Uh your worship, I believe we have time for one item before we move into the public meeting. Uh and that item is a request for, or an application for proposed zoning bylaw amendment. I have a motion that report PD thirty-one twenty-three relating to a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. For lands at the southwest corner of Wellington Street and Manor Road, be received for information. And further, the council authorized staff to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to zoning bylaw fifty-eight-eight. To permit a proposed residential development on lands, which may be described as block ten on registered plan eleven M two fifty-one in the city. And further, that a public meeting be scheduled for October tenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. In accordance with Ontario Regulation five forty-five slash O six as amended. A move by Counselor McCauley, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie? Dare we try one more?
Definitely, your worship. The next item relates to the removal of a holding zone symbol within Miller's Pond Phase Five subdivision. I have a motion that report PD thirty-four twenty-three relating to an amendment to the city zoning bylaw. To remove the holding zone symbol from lots fifty-six to sixty-three on plan eleven M two fifty-five. Within the Miller's Pond Phase Five subdivision, thirty-four T two one five O two, be received for information. And further, that council authorized preparation of a bylaw to remove the holding uh zone symbol. From lots fifty-six to sixty-three on plan eleven M two fifty-five. Move by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Madam Clerk, I think I'll remind the folks at home that we are, we will need to recess this meeting to move into a public meeting that starts at six o'clock. Uh tonight, we will finish the public meeting and then come back to the open session that we've just recessed. So let's just uh call a public meeting to order. This is a public meeting required, as required by the Planning Act. To afford any person an opportunity to make representation with respect to a proposed draft plan vacant land condominium. And zoning bylaw amendment for the lands located at twenty-one Park Avenue. The proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium will permit the development of six one-story detached dwelling units. To be registered in the vacant land condominium format. The purpose of the zoning bylaw amendment is to establish the site-specific standards for the development. Before we begin, members of the public are advised that any person who wishes to be notified of the decision. Of the approval authority in respect to this proposed draft land, draft plan of vacant land condominium. Must make a record, a written request to the director of planning. And the building services herein after known as the director. And if the person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make written submissions to the director. With respect to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium before the approval authority gives or refuses. To give approval to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium. The per- the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of any appeal. Before the Ontario Land Tribunal, unless, in the opinion of the board, there are reasonable grounds to do so. With respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, members of the public are advised. That if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting. Or make written submissions to the corporation, the city of Saint Thomas. Before the bylaws pass, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council. Or the co- council of the corporation, the city of Saint Thomas, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Further, if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting. Or make written submissions to the corporation, the city of Saint Thomas, before the bylaws pass. Person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal. Unless, in the opinion of the board, there's reasonable grounds to do so. Those wanting to be notified of the council's decision should email. Customer service at customerservice@stathamus.ca, provide their name and address. And those that do not have access, access to a computer but wish to be notified. Should call customer service at five one nine six three one one six eight zero, extension zero, and provide your name and address. Do any of the members of council have a disclosure of interest concerning any of the matters on this agenda? Seeing none? Uh madam clerk, what method of notice and when was notice given to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, notice was provided in the Saint Thomas Times Journal on Friday, August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And in accordance with council policies, notice was also mailed to property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of the proposed development.
Okay, I'll now introduce uh Mr. McCoom, the manager of planning services, who will provide the background information on the proposal and present the draft bylaw. Mr. McCoom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to share my screen now. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so in the first slide here, we have the subject lands located on a location plan. Essentially, it's within a block. It's uh roughly bounded by Park Avenue, Wellington Street, Huntington Terrace and Forest Avenue. Here's a copy of our aerial photography, again showing the subject lands in the red solid line. And with respect to the vacant land condominium plan, uh you can see on the screen, the plan will have access to Park Avenue. It'll be a driveway that'll come in and then there'll be six uh units, uh six detached units, three on either side of this extension of the driveway. Each of the units will have a uh dual parking space, so two parking spaces per unit. And then up here in this location here, there is room for four uh guest or visitor parking spaces. There's also adequate room for snow storage at the end of the uh the small lane here. This lane lacks as a turnaround for service vehicles, moving trucks out, sort of thing that come into the um into the site, so they can head back out. For the snow storage at the end of this lane, it's no storage beside the parking spots. It's a fairly simple uh planted condominium. And there is a zoning amendment that's been applied for to support the development. So the first part of the amendment states that zoning map seventeen to bylaw fifty-eight-eight is further amended by zoning the land shown outlined in a heavy solid lines. On schedule A as R three dash one seventeen, and this schedule will be added to and form part of the bylaw. It be known as special zoning map seventeen dash twenty-five. So on the screen now, you can see a s- a copy of the special zoning map part. Noting the subject lands in the R three dash one seventeen zoning designation. Going on with part two of the amendment establishes a special zone, new subsection seven point five point one seventeen. The area affected is the R three dash one seventeen, as was shown on the special zoning map part. The only permitted uses are single detached dwellings and accessory uses. The only permitted buildings and structures are buildings and structures for those permitted uses. The minimum lot area is being set at a half a hectare. There is minimum dwelling gr- unit ground floor area uh for single detached and split level dwellings of seventy-four square meters and sixty square meters respectively. Uh these will all be uh single detached dwellings. The maximum number of dwelling units on the site will be six. Maximum building height is eleven meters. Maximum lot coverage is forty percent. The required minimum number of parking spaces is two per dwelling unit and four for the visitor parking. And as I noted when we showed the draft plan. There's a special provision. This is a standard provision we use for vacant land condominium developments, stating that all buildings and structures that form part of a unit. Within a vacant land condominium shall mainly maintain a one meter setback from the unit boundaries. But also notes that an air conditioning unit may be located within that one meter setback. We have definitions for a split level dwelling. And also for a vacant land condominium. And also we have a definition for what a unit is. Essentially, that's the space within which the uh the the dwellings will be built. There's an exception to some of the standard provisions of the R three zone, as noted in part L of the amendment. That shall not apply because the uh there's special provisions otherwise dealing with those areas. For three of the amendments states that in anticipation of the eventual consolidation of the bylaw, we have a schedule B to the amendment. Which is zoning map, uh the zoning map uh consolidated to include all of the amendments to date. And here is that consolidated zoning map, subject lands being uh located uh right in this area in here. Uh being noted as having the R three dash one seventeen designation. And that is a draft of the amendment and the, and the draft plan of condominium worship, if there are any questions.
And we'll get to those. Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you received any written submissions on the proposed changes?
Uh your worship, we have not received any written submissions.
Right. I will now ask council, do they have any questions of Mr. McCoom or or others? Um we'll open the meeting to questions uh from the council first. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. I, looking at the the draft plan, it seems like there's a couple of sharp turns going in there. Would there be any issue for fire trucks to go in there, the big fire trucks to get in? Or is, is there any concern with that?
Mr. McCoom?
Thank you, your worship, uh through you to Counselor Herbert. Uh we've had some consultations uh on this plan, a couple of consultations so far. And the applications are circulated to the fire department for uh uh their review and comment. And so far, we've heard no concerns about uh the the radiuses on those corners to make the turns.
Further questions? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, your worship. Has there, the services for garbage pickup, the trucks that come in, we've had previous issues with other condominiums being built. They're not able to go into those areas, and of course, everyone's thinking environmental. So I was just wondering if they, our, our trucks can get in to pick up the garbage and for the recycling.
Mr. McCombe, have we touched on that?
Thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Gibson. Yes, we have taken a look at that. It was a subject that was discussed through the consultation process. I'm just going to share my screen again. Okay, can you see this slide that's on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so as I indicated, we went through this, there, there is a little bit of a, an extension of the driveway here, which will allow trucks, whether it's service trucks such as garbage trucks, emergency vehicles, moving vans, that sort of thing, to be able to turn and do a bit of a three-point turn in this area as, as you, as you may see, to allow them to, you know, pull in and then be able to turn around and then pull back out. So it should be able to accommodate movement throughout the site.
Councillor Herbert?
Yes, sorry, and I'm glad you put that drawing back up. Is there any issue with parking on the street? Can people park on the street, which would really tighten that in front of their homes?
Mr. McCombe, I guess, there's, there's two parking spots with each unit and then four visitors' parking spots, but no parking anywhere else on what would be considered an internal street?
That is correct, your worship. So yeah, they'll have a double drive on each, on each unit that'll allow two parking spots. The, there are four parking spots at the norally part of the site, but within that site, there wouldn't be no, like, on-street parking. Just whatever happens to be on the public streets outside of the site that may be available.
Further questions by council? Seeing that, then I will open the meeting to the public for questions. For those attending or who have already submitted concerns, then that would be already covered. If you're listening on your computer, tablet, or smartphone, please click the raised hand icon. If you have called into the meeting using a telephone, please dial star nine, and the questions will be taking, taken in the order in which they come. When given the opportunity to speak, please provide your name and address for the clerk's record. Anyone from the public with a question? And of course, we'll take any question from council as we go through this too. I'll ask again, is there any member of the public, use the raised hand icon if you're on Zoom or computer situation? And if you've called into the meeting using a telephone, use star nine as a way to identify you'd like to be heard, and your questions will be taken in that order. Any other, any, any, anyone looking to ask a question? This is their third ask from the chair. So if you're listening, please use the raised icon or use the dial, the star nine to let us know you're looking to ask a question. I'll then refer back to the council. Is there any further questions from council? Seeing done, then I will, in the opinion of the mayor, that all have been given a fair opportunity to ask questions this evening and express your views on the proposal. So if there's no further questions, please be advised that any person wishing further information on the actions of council regarding this subject applications, they should have emailed customer service at customerservice@stthomas.ca, provide their name and address. For those not having access to a computer and wish to be notified, please call 519-631-1680, extension zero, and provide your name and address. This public meeting is now concluded. Thank you, Mr. McCombe. We will now, as we can bring ourselves back together, return to our, our regularly scheduled programming.
Thank you, your worship. So we're back in strategic direction and development. Just asking whether there are any further items from the members before we proceed to community engagement and services. Your worship, seeing none, we're now in community engagement and services, nothing on the agenda at this time, unless there are any items from the members. And seeing none, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to sewer rotting rebate program. I've motioned that report ES 4623 relating to the sewer rotting policy be received for information. And further, that the city's sewer rebate program increase from $150 to $175 effective January the first, 2024. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments on the report? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, your worship. I, I went over the both, both letters. Thank you, Maria, for sending out the information that I asked for to all the members. Reading the bylaw and looking at what we're, with the two stories received from each time we've had this to our, to, to council. I, the stones were on the city's side. I, I personally feel that, well, not personally, I, I feel that we really owe the gentleman the full amount. I really do. The stones were on the, the city's side. It wasn't on his side. The, the plumber said it wasn't his issue. It was on the city property side. And that I, I just find it that we should really just move forward with this. Thank you.
Other questions? Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, your worship. Well, I think most of the council members received the original letter from Stephen. I took the opportunity to call Stephen and had a good chat with him and went through his report, and he was pretty specific on what he'd done. He thought he had followed the rules and regulations and was, was disappointed to see that he was not going to be able to get any refunds on his, on this problem. I called Chris Anderson, had a good chat with him, and he said the problem in 2017 started. And because of the big tree on the property, the roots, they had to reline the line up to the property line, and everything was removed then. And he agreed totally with what Stephen had said, that the, the plumber did find rocks on the video, and, and it was certainly on the outside of the, on the city property. But the question came about where did the rocks come from? There was no rocks when the city ended up relining it, and so where did the rocks come from? And he doesn't want to set a precedent with anybody on this, but after a, a good discussion, there was some, maybe there's some flexibility with the, the rebate program. And I suggested, maybe we could refer this report back to him for further review and take a look at the, the rebating, at least the, the rod of the rebate, sewer rotting rebate of $150. So he said he would if we referred it back, so I'd be happy to either make a motion or a suggestion that we refer the report back to, to Chris for further review. And hopefully we can, there is some flexibility with the rotting rebate program, so hopefully we could get some money for the, for the person, but he said he'd be happy to take another look at it and, and because there is some flexibility with this rebate program. So that would be, if, if I, if I need to make a motion to refer it back, I would make that motion now.
Let's, let's get to the other councillors first, and we'll do that. Have councillor Coler, then councillor McCully, then councillor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. I, I certainly hope that we don't have any referral. I, I'd like to see this dealt with tonight. And I, I, like councillor Gibson, feel that he's entitled to the entire amount. I don't think it's incumbent to him to say where the stones came from. The stones were on the city's side. I think we should need to do investigation to find out where they came from. Those, those type of rocks aren't going to flow down. If they're coming from inside the house, they're going to get stuck in the trap of the house. So they're coming from somewhere else. The video shows that the line coming out of his house is in good condition from the, the work that they've, they've done before. So whether there was construction somewhere else, or it's debris that was actually left over from the lining part, I, I don't know, but I don't think that's up to the, the homeowner to do that. He followed the advice of the city and incurred a bill that was quite a bit more, and based on that advice, continued to go. And there's not a lot of plumbers in town that have the machinery that the city had to actually clear this out. So I think had we, once it was identified it was on the city's side and took over that, the bill would have been far, far less than that, but because they advised to keep going, he did. And unfortunately, the contractor that had, had on site couldn't deal with the, the entire amount. And I, I think this has kind of dragged out long enough. I'd personally like to see this dealt with tonight, and the resident be refunded his money.
Thank you, councillor Coler. Councillor McCully?
I would agree that this has gone on long enough. The city report ES 0220 from January 2020 and today's report states the rebate program is to provide relief in the event of a backup on city property, not where the backup originated. And in this case, the backup is on city property. It states that the rocks, as I said, didn't enter city property. The plumbing contractor who provided services to the residents states the blockage is not on the city's, the residence's property. I had the opportunity to pop by, and no, there's clearly pride of ownership there. It's not like, so I am in support of also paying this and, and not having any further reports on this.
Thank you, councillor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I would, I'm going to vote against the, this report as well. First of all, I, I don't understand the logic if we're, if we're going from $150 because it wasn't enough, and we're increasing it to 175, and yet the cost of a plumber is 250. I don't know why we wouldn't be updating this to the, the true cost of a plumber, because it talks about where, if the, if the problem is on the city's side. So I think, first, for the first part, I think we should be looking at a rebate of what the plumber's going to cost, which would be, according to our own staff, is $250. And then the second point with regard to 94 Redan, I think he should be reimbursed for the full amount in this, in this occasion, on this occasion.
Councillor Peters?
Thanks, your worship. Having had a late mother who played rotting roulette every year and was always rolling the rod, so to speak, that the rotting was going to be on the city's side, not on her side. She won some and she lost some, and I've heard lots of rotting issues over the years, but I've never heard of rocks. And I'm with all my colleagues that let's just pay Mr. Lynch's bill and move on.
Right? So we have a report before us. I take it we would have to vote against this report and put another motion forward in order for that to happen? So councillor, we have a motion on the floor that's been moved and seconded, though.
Oh, it has been seconded?
Yep.
Excuse me, your worship, the, the resolution was that report be received for information and that the rebate program increase from 150 to 175? And so if council wished to address the payment of $452, we could entertain a motion after this one was enacted, or at least dealt with?
So since it's been, this has been moved or seconded, we either have to offer, say yes or no to this, to that report, so. Councillor Gibson?
So with the bylaw changed to 175, councillor Clark has mentioned about the plumbers today are $250. So could we change that dollar amount to $250? I, I talked to my friends in Sault Ste. Marie, and Mr. Lynch has also mentioned, you know, a few municipalities. They, they do do the amount up to, rate up to the amount of a plumber coming to your home, contractor coming to your home.
So, madam clerk, your, your advice to council on this, knowing, I think you're reading what the intentions may be by the majority, but.
Your worship, did, we wish to hear from the director about the increase? Or possibly if, if council wished to defer the the amount of the increase until after further information from the director?
We, we can, we can do that with the report we have before us, is defer it back to, to the director and ask for it to come back with a an explanation of the amount that it was going to. I think we can do that. We can do that with the report we currently have by just asking to defer. Right? So it's, Mr. Director, please. We'll, we'll take some input from you now.
Through the mayor to council, in the report, we canvassed five other similar-sized municipalities to determine if they provide a rebate for sewer rotting. And if so, what, what that amount was. Of the five municipalities, only one provided a rebate. And that happened to be $175, and that is the logic behind ours going from 150 to 175. Staff's concern about raising the rebate any higher than that would be simply because when we introduced this program, we noticed that plumbers increased their charge to homeowners. And so if we were to increase to $250, they'll likely increase that again, which puts homeowners who are not eligible at a just an unfair expense, just because we decided to raise our rate for a rebate to $250. So that's a concern that I leave you with. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to.
I'll go to councillor Coler here to stand up.
Thanks for the explanation, but the, the difficulty that I have with that, your worship, when you go back over the history of how we used to do it, we used to engage the plumber. We used to have it, and then you can look at the previous report and see how much staff time that incurred and then why we went to this. But the, the problem that I have with that is that we're basically saying we're going to give you $175 to fix our problem. Right? Because the only time that they're getting money on that rebate is if this blockage is on the city's side. So if it costs the guy $400 to fix the, the the blockage that was on our side, we're going to say, well, thank you very much, but we're only going to give you $175 for clearing our blockage. That's, that's the problem that I have with that when you, when you look at it. I think the intent was to, you know, make something better for us and the homeowners, but I think what we've done is downloaded things back onto the homeowner and will say, well, you know, if, if you're lucky enough that the blockage is on our side, we'll, we'll, we'll be a partner in, in paying that. And I, I, I think that's wrong. I think if, if that's found on our side, then the city should incur that that full expense and, you know, you know, hopefully do it within, within reason. And maybe if we think that that's going to happen, maybe we have to go back to the engagement of the plumber ourselves and, and, you know, put an RFP out for that and have it work that way. But I don't, I don't think that we can have the residents on the hook for fixing our problem.
Point on that, Kevin?
Through the mayor to councillor Coler, I think it's important to differentiate that it's not just where the blockage occurs. If there's negligence on the homeowner part, they're not eligible for a rebate. So we see many dog toys, we see clothes, we see children's toys, we see lots of things get washed from the source, where that is the only point of entry. So in this case, it's rocks. We know, all we know is that we lined the pipe in 2017 in a new light condition, and in May of 2023, rocks appeared. We don't know how they got there. But after we cleared it out, the pipe was confirmed to be still in new light condition with no cracks or holes in the city's side of the pipe. So that's the only thing I could ask, add for some clarification.
Further questions or comments? I'm looking for guidance from council as to where you'd like to go next. Councillor Clark?
Call a vote?
I think that may be the easiest way to go. We have the report before us, all in favor. Any opposed? I think we've defeated that report, so now. Councillor Peters?
Your worship, I'd, I'd move that the homeowner at 54 Redan Street be reimbursed the full $452.
I second that.
I'm okay with that. Kim?
Could we have the motion indicate 94 Redan? Um, could we have the motion indicate ninety-four Redan Street?
Uh, your worship, the motion reads as follows, that council authorized payment of four hundred and fifty-two dollars representing the entire amount of the rotting costs incurred by Stephen Langes at ninety-four Redan Street.
Before, sorry, was that, did you move that thing, Counselor Peters? Seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands? Oh, you got it already? Okay, great. Sorry, I'm trying to do your work and mine. Can, can I ask, would council be okay if we also ask our director to come back with further information? Yes or no to this? We got this of how it's voted on, but to also come back with a new proposal since we just voted down the previous report. Okay. So if that's okay to add that to that. All right. So discussion further. Counselor Wookiee?
Thanks very much, your worship. Um, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but just because it's so weird. Like it's just, it's so weird that it's such a one-off odd thing and that's it. Because I do not like voting against policies. Um, I think we enter a very dangerous zone every time we do this. It bugs me. But in this case, it's just so weird. And it's so uncertain how these things got there that I'm willing to say yes on the scale of probability. Um, this mystery, you know, it's like in search of back with Leonard Nimoy back in the seventies. Like I, I have no idea what's, what's happening, but I'll give the homeowner the benefit of the doubt. And just for everybody at home's, you know, awareness, of course, uh, we as counselors hear a lot from a lot of different people that have, it has varying degrees of accuracy. And, um, but like I said, benefit of the doubt goes to the homeowner on this occasion. Thank you.
Further discussion or comments? Seeing none in favor of the, this motion, all in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
Uh, thank you, your worship. And just to confirm that there's direction to the director to provide further information about the increase to the sewer rebate program amount.
Yes.
Uh, next item relates to MTO Highway three twinning and Highway four widening and bypass. I have motion that report ES fifty dash twenty-three relating to the Highway three twinning and Highway four widening and proposed Talbotville, Talbotville bypass be received for information. Uh, moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments on the report? Counselor Peters?
Uh, thanks, worship. I just want to say thanks to everyone involved in this report. Um, the one thing I would just, uh, maybe Kevin can clarify is the, the linkage on Hughes Street that used to exist that doesn't exist anymore. That was certainly there till at least nineteen seventy-six when the bypass started. So I wouldn't want the MTO thinking, oh, it, it didn't exist. It, it did exist until the bypass was built. So I just to make sure that we strengthen our case um, for it. But no, thanks for everything you've done in this one.
Uh, through the mayor to Counselor Peters, yes, we did reflect that piece in the, in the comments there, um, requesting that the MTO consider reestablishing this lost pedestrian link in support of their own provincial policy directive.
If, if I could share, we, we're getting lots of information from people on the whole project that MTO is doing. But you've done an excellent detailed job here of the stuff inside the city, the city's request to the MTO on this project. I like, I like the reporters good in detail. Thanks. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Unless there are any further items from the members for this committee, we'll now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four employee group benefits renewal. I have motion that report HR oh four twenty-three relating to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four employee group benefits renewal be received for information. And further, the council approved the renewal for the group benefit program with manual life financial for extended healthcare, dental, short-term disability, life insurance and long-term disability benefits effective October first, twenty twenty-three for a period of one year. Moved by Counselor McCully, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Next item relates to community grant applications for September twenty twenty-three. I have a motion that report TR thirteen twenty-three relating to community grant applications for September twenty twenty-three be received for information. And further, that council approved the community grant request from Iron Horse Festival for thirty-five hundred dollars. And further, the council approved the community grant request from St. Joseph's High School for one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And further, the council approved the community grant request from the St. Thomas Skating Club for three thousand three hundred dollars. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's Carrie.
Unless there are any further items from the members?
Counselor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, we are in receipt of a letter on Friday, um, from Mr. Vandermaerle. Will that be on the agenda next week or do they have to do something else to have that in the agenda? Uh, Madam Clerk?
Uh, your worship will be getting an original signature from Mr. Vandermaerle and then it can be placed on council's agenda.
Thank you.
Further items? Counselor Clark?
Uh, I guess I would request of our planning department that if they could comment and give us some ideas with, with regard to, uh, to that letter. Uh, so that we can deal with it in a more timely fashion. There's a, a number of, number of points that were raised in that, uh, in that letter. And I'm not sure of the validity or the legality. We're almost a third party. We've got someone that wants to sell a piece of land. We got somebody that wants to buy a piece of land. And so, uh, I'm not sure, um, whether we can do some of those requests. And so I'd just like to speed up the process and make sure that we've got some comments made that would provide some guidance at the next meeting.
Mr. Pompili, do you want to help us with this or? Maybe I shouldn't have asked it that way, but.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I can, I can certainly, uh, provide some initial comments. Um, I'm happy to provide further comments going forward, but, uh, the nature of the letter um, was one that raised concerns, objections to the consent that was brought forward by the committee of adjustment. That, that, um, matter was dealt with and, um, I believe the appeal period for that ends this week. Um, thirteen, uh, the thirteenth of September is when the appeal period ends for that. I hope I have that date right, right? That's, that's a date that comes to mind for me. But the nature of it, um, really is this, we, we had, we received an application, um, from the museum lands to sever off a portion of, of, of their holdings. Um, that was dealt with by the committee. The committee approved it, subject to conditions. There was, um, some interest from members of the public that raised concerns, some opposition to it on various fronts. Many, some being concerned for what possibly could go there in the future, some high-density housing possibly. Um, some were concerned about the process, were hoping that maybe some, um, um, that the applicant, the application be put on hold and that um, maybe a, a community plan or secondary plan be, be considered for that area. Others were just concerned that, um, it should remain in whole, um, and not, not be severed and, and, and still be retained with, um, the museum lands. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. The, at, at the end of the day, the committee did decide to grant the consent subject to conditions. Uh, the applicant will have, uh, two years to satisfy those conditions. Um, no developments being proposed at this point. The, the principle of land use is what, what the zone permits. The zone only permits what's permitted within the, the railway land zoning. So nothing is, is, is permitted, um, on these lands. This is simply a severance of, of land that then is subject to further conditions. Um, some of the points brought forward, when those lands do develop, they ultimately will have to go through a planning process. Now, depending on the timing, that planning process could include, uh, um, developing a secondary plan or area plan for that. I, I'd certainly be in favor of that. I, I've advocated for that. I spoke to some of the property, main property owners in that area and urged them to maybe consider that as an option going forward. But that's something that, in my opinion, would require the cooperate, the cooperation of the major property owners in that whole area, that area being Talbot, Ross Street, Wellington Street, Queso Crossings, the primary property owners there wanted to come together in advance. A, uh, an owner-funded secondary plan, we'd certainly be open and welcome to that. I think that would be a great approach, uh, going forward. But again, it's not something that this severance should trigger. But it's something that we may want to consider going forward. But there'd be other planning act, um, uh, uh, planning app, that applications required, rezoning, official plan amendments, possibly plan a subdivision before those lands get developed. So there's, um, right now it's kind of premature to, uh, suppose what's going to be hap, uh, what's going to develop there. Because there are other processes that are required in, in order to advance any development there.
To Counselor Peters?
Well, thanks, worship. Um, and thanks for that explanation, Lou. And I, I think my question would be is we are the, you talked, Lou talked about getting the landowners. Well, the two key, the, 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 the one key landowner in all of this is us, the city of St. Thomas. We own the lands at front on Wellington Street. Um, and whether Fifth Ave is going to go through or not, all those lands are going to, to be redeveloped, they need us. The other parcel of land that, uh, is involved in this is the, the lands east of Ross Street that we own. And if you're going to do something from either direction, from the south or from the west, the city is the key player. Um, we own land in front of the Queso Station. If there's going to be train tracks, is there, is Center Street going to be extended?
Yep.
That's the city again. So my question would be to Lou, your worship, can we not initiate this process ourselves now? And the city bring these other players to the table to, to keep it moving? As, as someone has described to me, described to me today in a meeting is we have a tidal wave of development and new development that's going to be coming. We need to be ready for, uh, for this new development. Can we jumpstart the process by us initiating a secondary plan?
I'll ask you first, Lou. I have some thoughts on it too.
Certainly, it's, it's at council's discretion in terms of, of, of what the next steps, uh, would be. We are one of the property owners. Absolutely, we are. We own park, parkland in that area and, and some vacant lands in that area. But there are other key property owners that, 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 that are there as, as well, that, that would ultimately be developing those lands. Our interest will prob, primarily be the community interest in terms of making sure that some of those valuable assets that the city owns today are not only maintained, but are enhanced and expanded on. So absolutely, we're, we'd be a key player and, and part of the participants in that for sure. Um, but, um, undertaking an area study is, is, can be a complex and expensive, uh, process. Well, it's one that really I don't think has ever been done in this community. Um, so it'd be, it'd be a great exercise and the, these are a key. Uh, these lands are just strategically located to be a key, um, and, and vital area to undertake one of those studies. It's just, it's, um, uh, we, we'd, we'd wait, we, I think it's something that requires some broader discussion by everybody here around the, the table and, uh, and, and the leadership team as well. And more importantly, um, some of the key property owners in that block as well.
Further up, follow up?
Well, I, I'd just like to follow up by saying, um, you know, I, I joined city council in nineteen eighty-eight. And when I came on council, we complete, the city had just completed a railway re, railway lands redevelopment study that, as we talked in the strategic planning, effectively went up onto the shelf. And now that we've got some movement starting to happen, and, and maybe if we jumpstarted it, maybe it does encourage some of the other landowners and, and one landowner in particular who owns two significant parcels of land, um, one at Talbot and Ross and another one between the Railway Museum and Queso Crossing. Maybe if we can move this process along, it, it brings some of the other players to the table to speed up the process.
Further questions or comments, Counselor Clark?
Uh, I, I would concur. I, I, I mean, I, I'm not against the, the severance. So I mean, that piece has happened and, and once that's happened, then I think, I think it's incumbent on us to be, uh, to broker some kind of plan and to be the leaders. Uh, we've got two or three valuable pieces of property that unless we're a part of, a major partner, these other private developers can't do anything. And, and, um, it's the downtown area, it's historic railroad lands that I think we would want to have a say in how it's developed. And so I think, I, I really think we should show some leadership and, um, in, and have, uh, through yourself and Lou, uh, the discussion that he's suggesting and have further discussion about how that could happen and when it should happen.
Further, Counselor Wookiee?
Thanks, your worship. Um, for Mr. Pompili, I just want to ask, because I don't know. Uh, roughly speaking, what dollar figure are we talking about here? Or, and/or, I'll give you a choice to answer the second one. Um, is this something we could do in-house or is this something we hire consultants for? Or do you want to just say no comment to both of them and that's okay? Thanks.
Uh, through you, uh, your worship. Um, uh, I refuse to answer on the grounds it may incriminate me. No, I, 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 um, it's a difficult question to answer in terms of the cost. The cost would be significant. It's, it, that's a, um, depending, I would recommend that the, the block that would be looked at would be that entire block as I described.
Yes.
Wellington, uh, I'm sorry, Wellington, Ross, Talbot, Queso Crossing, that entire, that's significant. Um, significant parcel would be a significant undertaking. And, and my experience, how these have been done primarily in the past is they're, they're usually, um, developer funded. But then, um, um, developer funded but undertaken by the municipality. So the, the planning department with some help, we probably have to hire some consultants that, that definitely to, uh, to help us. So it'd be a significant undertaking, but I think primarily there should be, there needs to be some buy-in by the, the main owner, the main developers, owners in that area to fund that type of project, that type of endeavor in my, in, in my opinion.
I, I was going to get there. Is there any other questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, no, no, thanks, your worship. And, and, and thanks, Lou. And, and I, 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 I just want to help to encourage us to move along.
Yes.
Because I see this as, there, there's, there's more, more linkages involved in this. You've got another property, you've got TBR who owns the lands to the east of Boston Pizza that could, if Center Street gets extended through, that's a, that's a linkage to Balaclava Street.
Yep.
Then if you keep moving east, you've got Erie Excavating, who owns the old TBR lands, who's got a, a straight parcel of land from, uh, Queso Crossing virtually, or just east of the police station, all the way to Centennial. What a trail linkage. We've got two overhead bridges on Talbot Street, uh, uh, or one in Fairview, one on Talbot Street. We could have an amazing trail that gets started, that ties into other trails that could go up to the VW site. Like, like to me, let's, again, I'm telling a broken record, I'm saying, let's get out in front of this one and let's bring all the players to the table and see what we can get started.
If, if I can add, it's exactly what we have been doing. The owners of the property of, uh, uh, every one of those owners of the properties have addressed, have, have come to us. Um, or even those thinking of doing things on some of the land have certainly come to us. And that's where it got to community or committee of adjustment to get that first conversation started. But as, as, as Louis shared with us today, it is usually a joint thing. The city's conversations with the people who own the lands, talking about the future development. We have one step already in place there though, is that the railway lands in and of themselves are under the heritage designation of the downtown and the, and the railway heritage designation. So each of those things are kind of layered on each other on, on the development of that land. So as, as Louis shared with us, quite often paid for by the people who would like to develop. We are a city who is in drastic need of good housing and in, in the core, high density or good, good density housing in our core. So we will listen to all who want to have a conversation with us there. And we'll even, Steve, as you've put it, kind of. And we'll even, Steve, as you've put it, kind of push some of those conversations. There's a couple of landowners who really don't talk to us that much, but we've been out even asking them to come and talk about their land. So I'd like us to carry on, um, with this. There's, there is a railway, a bit of a railway study happening there right now with some, uh, Fanshawe College students and, and what they're looking at. I understand one of the other, uh, people who would like to do something else on that land is actually uh, contributing towards that study. Um, let's see where that goes. Um, I, I'd like us not to get in the way if, if we, if we don't have to. So let's, um, hear what the developers, the owners of the land, the Railway Museum, the, uh, the, the rest of the people own pieces and, and let's, uh, uh, be straight that we are hearing and, and having those conversations, too. Steve, you're right, we own a piece, a cou, a couple little slivers of property there, but they're pretty strategically placed as to what the city has, and I think we should bundle this together and come up with a great use of that whole block as, as Louis talked. Did that help answer questions you may be getting from constituents? Okay. Anything else under, uh, where am I? Corporate governance?
Uh, seeing none, your worship, I have motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee of the whole, as recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
No reports of committees this evening. No petitions and communications at this time, unless, uh, there are any that have come forward from members. We'll now move into unfinished business of council. If there are any items from the members. Now in.
Councillor, or councillor Herbert?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to recognize our mayor and Stephanie for a great job at Dancing with the Stars this year. It was a great.
Thank you.
It was a community fundraiser for Queso Station and, uh, well-attended, and everybody had a good time. So thank you, worship, for participating. It's great.
It took good coaching. Uh, Jim and Rita Herbert. So councillor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, we had a flag raising today for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
Yes.
And, uh, they were mentioning that they're trying to match, they've got a waiting list of some thirty-eight, uh, kids that need, uh, some mentoring. So I just thought, since we're on the air tonight, that I would mention that and hope that there might be some, uh, folks out there that have some spare time that could help, uh, some youth in Saint Thomas. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, other items, of course, coming up, September is also Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and you each have a little marker with a pin on, on, on your, on your desk. Next week, uh, before we meet again, we'll be doing the flag raising for childhood cancer, and so wanted to make sure we spoke of that. Um, and I know that we talked about town halls and we talked about the, uh, the strategic plan. I sure want to, to reinforce to the folks at home, three, uh, uh, community town halls that are available to them, September nineteenth, September twenty-first, sorry, September nineteenth at the Joe Thornton Center. September nineteenth is a virtual Zoom. And October twelfth is at the, at the, uh, Public Library. Please make sure you at home, the public at home, get a chance to participate in our strategic plan initiatives and give us all the information you need. We'll continue to talk about those dates and use our website and our social media to, to share with them, too. Any other new business? Great.
Uh, seeing none, we'll now move into bylaws. I have motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands, that the bylaws be now read a first time. Refer to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
First bylaw, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the eleventh day of September, two thousand twenty-three.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Next bylaw, please.
Second and final bylaws, a bylaw to amend by law fifty dash eighty-eight, being the zoning bylaw for the city of Saint Thomas. This is to remove the holding symbol on lots fifty-six to sixty-three on Plan eleven M two fifty-five in the Miller's Pond Phase Five subdivision.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. I rise and report the successful passing of two bylaws.
Great.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Baldwin Sands, that the report of council in committee of the whole on the two bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time and gross, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Under public notice, there are two notices for this evening. The first relates to the str, strategic plan. As mentioned last week, notice is hereby provided that council intends to hold a special meeting tomorrow on September twelfth at five PM at the Queso Station to discuss the Saint Thomas Strategic Plan. Uh, the second notice relates to an unbudgeted capital expenditure. Uh, notice is hereby provided that administration intends to introduce a report at the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting, requesting approval of an unbudgeted capital expenditure relating to the undertaking of a refresh of the city's, uh, transportation master plan. Um, no notices of motion, uh, this evening, uh, your worship, at this time, there is a need to move into closed session. And I have a motion that the meeting be closed to deal with a personal matter about identifiable individuals. Moved by councillor Wookiee, seconded by councillor Gibson.
If I can take this time to, to, uh, let the people know who are currently watching us on Rogers or streaming on, on our city website that we will now be moving into closed session. When we finish a closed session, we'll only come back to public session in order to adjourn for the evening. So, or, and accept any work that we do in the closed session. Uh, so I wanted to thank you all for watching us tonight and, uh, say, are there any questions or comments on moving to closed session? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.